All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, January 5th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. Everyone can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, introduction to board members. To my left, we have Jerry Graybill, myself, Michael LaRue, to my right, Don Gannarelli. We have CJ.
Hiletic.
Hiletic. And via Zoom, we have Matt Henry. We also have Dave Andresson, our coding and planning technician, and Irish Griffith, the code enforcement officer, and also via Zoom, we have Lee J. Feldman from SMPDC. All right, I'm going to open up the first public comment. This is open to any resident that has to say anything that is something that's not on our agenda today, they can speak now. Okay, close that public comment, and I will open up the public hearing for the preliminary major subdivision, the Berwicks, map 36, lot 38. So anyone can come up, just state your name, your address, and then just say your piece, and then you can sit down, and we will answer your questions in old business.
Good evening, my name is Craig Kysker. I thought we were going to get a presentation first. We tried to be proactive when we came to the town hall after we got our letter, and we're told that as I asked questions, some of them were answered incorrectly. And so when I pursued that with town code in different directions, that was pretty much a waste of my time, and I went and pursued questions from people with knowledge of legal sides and everything else. And then when we got to the walkthrough, it was separate. I was also told at the town hall that it wasn't put on your site until after this meeting by Dave, and then I was made aware today, it is on the site, I believe. You and Neil said that the whole project is on the site. And all I got from Dave was the original drawing of what we walked today, not of the whole property, which also I asked and inquired, is there anything else he's trying to build? What are the setbacks? What are the, what is the maximum amount of families allowed on that parcel being R1, R2, and 8.8 acres? What are the restrictions of things? And he wasn't able to give me the answers other than he told me to go read the code, which I asked, that it's all online. He said, yes, and that's where I got it, and I believe that's up to date, I hope, and that's the right one I read for the town. And so I tried to do my homework that way. But I, you know, the other drawings, you know, he told me, well, maybe at some point they could do something up there, it depends on setbacks, but they already have it drawn. So I, the people that work for me so far haven't really helped me, you know, the ones that we pay our tax dollars for. So I am a little frustrated right now at this point, so I'd really love to hear Neil's presentation, so I understand apples for apples on what we're talking about, that it's not a cluster, that it's condos. I was told that it's all being held by a realtor at first and only going to be rented, but a condo can be sold, and they don't need to come back in front of you if I understand it correctly. Once it's built, they can sell each one as an individual. It's not, as I was informed, it was all going to be rentals. There's no selling of them at this time. They would have to come back in front of the board, you stated to me, Dave, to change that at a later date. But from the quick things I was able to read since the walkthrough, it looks like a condo doesn't have that restriction that was on a cluster, which I was told it was, and it's not, and we're dealing with that now. And I'm just trying. So I can't speak for all these people, but I don't really know what I'm up against. And when we were out there, we weren't really encouraged to ask questions because we were told we were going to get a presentation, and then we would be able to ask a question. I would like to know why there's two meetings tonight, and we don't get to digest things and then try to, as a group, you know, like I tried to be proactive, it didn't work. It does work in this building for some reason. But, and get my questions ready and be ready for you guys, because I know there's a 30-day window before you guys have to sign it, and that I don't know if you can make that longer or shorter, that's between you guys. But I believe if I read the town rules, that there's 30 days for you guys to look at this, and then you have to sign. That's pretty much the time. So we tried to, you know, we're trying to get it and get going, but it's hard to, I don't know why, and Dave said it's two meetings tonight, which is very good, you know, he pointed out that we need, we had two times, don't leave early, stay for both. Can you tell me why there's two? We don't, as people don't get to-
There's only one meeting tonight. There's only one public hearing tonight.
Okay, anyway, you understand where I am.
There's two public hearings this evening. There's two public hearings this evening.
It doesn't say it on the agenda, Dave.
Well, that's what, that's what we talked about. That's what we, that's what you and I talked about before the meeting.
Before the meeting, we were talking, all right.
So I think if our caller James said correctly, that you guys have to find the application complete, or is this finding a fax?
No, we have to find it complete, but we, all we did was accept the sketch plan.
Yeah, and then he said there would be another opportunity for, or should be another opportunity for the public to speak, or maybe keep the public comment open.
Lee J., would you like to speak in on this?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight is the public hearing, where the board listens to comments like Mr., is it Kyskers?
Hi, Mr. Kysker.
And other folks that may have questions and want to get answers, and I'm assuming that the applicant's representative is there and can provide some of those answers this evening. Then the planning board, the reason you're thinking there's two, two items on the agenda is because it's listed twice. One is for the public hearing, and then if the planning board chooses to take action on the preliminary approval, then they could take action on the preliminary approval, but the applicant still has to come back for a final review and a final approval at a later date. So that's why it's listed twice on the agenda, so that there's the public hearing portion, they'll close the public hearing, and then they can go into deliberation and potentially take action only on the preliminary portion of the project.
Okay. My confusion was someone said two public hearings, and that's why I was looking at you like, we only have one. So it is just that public hearing and the old business, and then after the old business, like Lee J. says, is when it comes back up. If there's any more concerns that need to be voiced out, then you will have your opportunity for it.
That's, that's exactly what I meant.
Yeah. Okay, all right, yeah, yeah. We want to make sure everyone has their voice heard, and every, everything is up to spec, and everyone's on board. So with that, if there's anyone else that would like to speak, yeah, just come on up, state your name and your address.
Thank you for this opportunity, board. My name is Mary Gonyer from 23 Cemetery Road. So we have totally enjoyed where we're living with the nice privacy in back there. That will be changed as of now. So we are directly behind where the townhouses are going to be. And so I have two problems, two concerns. One is the, any privacy screening, because when I took a look at that, it was certainly so narrow that even putting any shrubs or whatever, it's going to be growing onto the road and all over the place, falling over. So whatever, I'm just in concern about having continued some privacy screening there, because it's not very far from the houses. And number two, the drainage. So I saw where, where your, that drainage area is. Ours has been, and I don't know with this road if it's going to be worse, ours has actually been coming down from where the Mackey Way is, be just before that road bifurcates. That's where we get all our water, and that's what goes into our garage right now. We took care of the water that was coming into our porch by, during a drywall kind of thing, so the water collects there without freezing. But in the spring, the water comes from that Mackey Way bifurcation. And that's still, we try to make a little mound there to direct it a little differently, and most of the time it works unless it's a really lot of rain. So either we're going to have to dig another drywall just before the, before the garage again, to try to encourage that to go there rather than into the garage. So those are my two concerns. So that wetland that you have taken care of over there, that sounds great, that's actually going to be more for my neighbor's yard, because that's the direction it would hit. But mine has actually been from that Mackey's Way. So those two concerns continuing with privacy and the drainage. So thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Craig Kysker again, 160 Pine Hill Road. So are you going to do a presentation, or do I start trying to ask questions with quite a bit of ignorance? Because I looked at clusters, not condos, on what it is, and, I mean, do I go first, or does Mr., Neil, I'm sorry for civil consult, everybody keeps calling him Neil.
I mean, Lee J., do we usually give a presentation before, or is it like after the public hearing?
There's really nothing that dictates that. I mean, I think if Neil can do a presentation now, so that applicants, so that the butters or other folks that haven't been privy to a lot of the information yet, want to hear about it before they ask questions, that's certainly acceptable. So if you want to allow Neil to do that presentation, that would be fine.
Okay. Neil, if you don't-
Thank you.
Yep.
I can't, I can't see you guys. I didn't want to interrupt. I can't see you.
Okay.
Lee J., can you see them?
No, I just see the BCM sitting there. I don't, I don't see them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the town, I don't see you guys. Just throwing it out there. I can still talk.
Yep.
Okay, I'll start our introductory presentation here for this project. My name is Neil Reposa, I'm a civil consultant here on behalf of Pine Hill Realty LLC. We have proposed here is, it's a major subdivision and conditional use application. It is a combined, combined application for the two, and that's for the, for the multifamily use up front is what requires that conditional use. It's an 8.4 acre lot that spans between Pine Hill Road and Cemetery, Cemetery Road. As was kind of discussed previously, we have, we have two proposed single-family lots here, and this is, let me backtrack a little bit. This lot is partially in the R1 zone and partially in the R2 zone. Only this small section right up against Pine Hill Road is in that R1 zone, which allows for a little bit, a little bit denser, a little bit denser development and smaller lot sizes. Majority of it out here, and this is what we're taking all our, our calculations for the multifamily, as well as these two separate lots out here. That's what all that calculation is based on. In order to keep these lots at, at 20,000 square feet, they need to have a municipal water and sewer connected, and that is the reason why we have this long 30-foot wide easement to, to allow, to allow both utilities to come through and serve these lots. And then these lots, that's what allows those to be 20,000. If, if anything were to happen, and this, these two lots were not connected to municipal sewer water prior to occupancy, then this would be required to be a 60,000 square foot lot, and I think that was where people had been getting the idea that these were undersized. Because if they didn't have this, this large easement coming across and providing them those utilities, then these would have to be larger. So we'll flip to the, to the next one here. So this, this is more, this is more close up on the multifamily condo portion of it. This is where the, the majority of the design was. And I'm going to pull this out so you can see.
Yeah, you guys, no, you're fine.
And so here we have our, our design plan. It consists of a private right-of-way being sectioned off of the parcel, but still it's going to be owned in conjunction with this giant, the, the larger parcel that's, that's accommodating the condo units, and it'll be maintained and kept by the condo association. So that's, it's not proposed to ever be taken over by the town or, or maintained by the town in any way. It's coming in off of Pine Hill Road as a 24-foot wide roadway to town standards to get the frontage to allow the, allow the rest of the development. So we've brought this around and brought a one-way driveway coming across and then connecting back into the, the new access roadway. We've expanded this portion of the roadway slightly to, to 24 feet. The remainder of this is just going to be a 20-foot one-way, one-way access. And this was just due to the request of, of the fire department. Upon their review, they wanted to be able to have a, have an emergency vehicle be able to be parked here and still have a second emergency vehicle bypass that. As I said, there are 10, 10 condo units proposed. They're townhouse-style condos with, each one will have a one-car undergarage and enough room for illegal parking space in front of the units. And then we're also proposing 13 spaces for visitor maintenance, you know, additional, additional cars that any of the residents may, may be utilizing. We have, we have designed and implemented a, a grass filter area out here adjacent to the wetland, and this is going to be catching the flow off of the parking lot, which is the main concern for a lot of stormwater treatment. So that's going to be treating that, as well as treating the flows, to make sure that we do not have any flows excess coming off the lot. As, is it Mary? Yes. As you noted there, there was a lot of the water that flows kind of over that hill and down into where this, your adjoining property is here, and we, we were aware that that could be an issue. So that's why we, we have super elevated that roadway to tip back into the development, and that we have a couple of catch basins on the other side of the roadway there, so that everything will come back and get into these, and it actually will pipe down and go to a level spreader, which is headed to slow that flow down, and that will enter directly into that wetland. So that theoretically should bypass your property entirely. We have submitted for a permit by rule and permit by notification for the disturbance itself with the Department of Environmental Protection, and that was, was granted or it wasn't rejected, so that equals it was granted. And also for impact to the wetlands here, we got a, an RPA permit by rule for the utilities that will cross eventually. So that's enough of an overview for, for now, or is there anything else we need to hit on?
If you do, you got to come up and speak, but-
I mean, I can, if it's, if anything that's on here meets all the requirements, all the, all the minimum requirements for the town, and that's something, this will be going through review, and that all those, you know, kind of check boxes will have to be, have to be checked off to make sure all the dimensional things work, that the widths, the setbacks, and all of that. So as it stands now, yes, everything on the, on the plan meets the, meets the dimensional requirements.
Okay, thank you, Neil.
Craig Kysker, once again, from 160 Pine Hill Road. We've been trying to find out, I believe there's 250 feet of frontage, Neil? On the road?
There it is. I don't off the top of my head how much frontage total there is on there. It's a lot of stuff. Still, I can't read it on this one, but there's a total of, some of 100 feet of frontage for, it's over 100 feet of frontage for the existing, of the existing lot, and then the frontage that we are obtaining is actually going to be on that private right-of-way. It's going to be built in town, and that's what it says, to get that, to get the frontage needed for-
Says minimal 150. What I'm trying to find out is, how much, how much are you using of that, for that right-of-way? Of that road front-
You can answer, we'll ask the question now, but you can answer that in old business. Neil, thank you. All right, we're just getting too far in the weeds. This isn't, it's question time, not question and answer time right now.
Okay. We're just curious. And then how much of is the original house sitting on that you're taking out of that 8.4 acres? Also, when I looked under a cluster, now this does not pertain, I guess, to condos, but it said that they must have two drawings, one that actually put single-family homes in, on that property at, at all restrictions, with everything right, a road, everything. Then based on the amount of houses that could be there, they couldn't build a bigger cluster than the amount of dwellings that would have been there, okay? Well, I don't know now that they are putting in this power easement over an existing lot, which can be sold later and the whole thing, I don't know that, all those codes. I'd love to have this gentleman chime in or whatever and explain that to us. But R2, like Neil said, was 60,000 square feet otherwise, and there was no way you were getting 12 families living on this property, sending kids to school and all. And, and the other question is, how many bedrooms are in these? Because nobody has said that yet. I know it's got one garage, but nobody will tell me how many it sleeps. How many are in these condos? How many bedrooms, you know?
Wait till old business. This is just the asking question time.
Well, answers lead to more questions.
Yep.
So we got to have answers some point. Do we get questions after we get answers?
You get questions in the next time it comes in.
The next meeting later?
Yep.
So all we're allowed to do is answer questions now, we don't-
You ask questions right now that you have questions for, and when we have those answers and you have new questions, you can come in and ask them again.
And how many meetings do we have in 30 days?
Well-
Can I have that answer?
I don't, sir, I don't know where you're getting 30 days from.
That was when, that was because we were told cluster, and when I read the rules.
No, this isn't, this isn't a cluster.
I know, but that's what we were told originally.
I, I didn't, I did not tell you that it was a cluster. This isn't 30 days.
You didn't tell me 30 days when you read that.
I didn't tell you 30 days. But we can argue, we can argue about that if you'd like, but-
I didn't argue, I just told you we're right, sir.
No, that's not what you said earlier. You said I told you 30 days.
The cluster thing, I'm right on. The, the timeframe, we read under a cluster in the town bylaws, or whatever you want to call it, but no, the rest of it, yes, you did tell me that. Absolutely. That's it.
I did?
I would have never gone looking for a cluster.
I did tell you that?
Yes, 100%, at least three times. Both, both of my visits, you cited that, and I asked you more about it, and you said as long as they have setbacks, they can cluster as many as possible.
Okay, all right, yeah, it's not, so we're just going to keep moving on. Just please pertain to this.
Okay. The other thing is where they're talking about running that 30-foot power easement, there is a culvert that feeds from Fox Ridge all the way down. It was hand dug, I don't know how many years ago, and it still does work, and it needs to be dealt with because, as Neil pointed out, when civil did their walkthrough, they didn't see a lot of flow or something like that. I forget your word. But you know the hole it's talking about on the wall down there?
Yeah.
And you see how deep it is, and that's where, you know, you'll have deer down in there in the middle of winter, because there's no place to go water.
Yeah, they can't hear, what, the reason why he can't answer anything is you have to be up on the mic, the people at home that are watching can't hear.
Okay. And so that needs to be dealt with also. The amount of homes and the amount of bedrooms and, you know, things like that, I, I do, I, I need to understand where bringing in an easement for power has enabled you to bring, to basically turn it to R1 somehow? You've basically just taken an R2 and made it zoning to an R1 at that point? I'd love to know why, how that's done that simply. I also would like to know who in the highway department or whatever is picking the exit for that? I mean, if they can put an easement all the way out, they could come out on cemetery too, right? So why are we putting two trailer park entrances, Old Pine Hill, Cemetery Road, a new development you guys have already okayed, just, just within, between almost Cemetery and Old Pine Hill? There's the acreage right across the street from me, which I believe the same gentleman owns, and I'm sure that he'll be doing something with that, and there'll be another road there. Then we have Fox Ridge, you know how many roads we have entering on that bend? You realize that the fire department hits that siren before they start that bend and before they start all those intersections because of the amount of volume and the traffic and the issues there, and is this being addressed? Also is what we read, back to reading the wrong thing, but I think it should apply, I hope it applies to everything, it said that they need to provide cost for the police, the fire, the schools, they need to say what, what the effect of the, these 12 dwellings. And I'd also like to know, are they done at 12? Because they've left 50 feet to come in to that land that's in the middle between the condos and between the house units. And also, have they left themselves enough to do another condo section when they tear down the old house? Because other than vinyl siding and moving somebody in, the electrical service isn't even tied to the side of the house, it's dangling there. I mean, nothing's been, the barn's fallen in, and so nothing's telling me that somebody's taking care of that property and leaving it the way it is. It tells me that they've done everything else, they're really, why are they subdividing it now, and what are their, what are they up to? Basically, you're just trying to find out instead of just letting people chip away at it and us being back here every time, and you guys hearing it every time, because they're just chipping away. And, and just like they did down the road, where we have Pine Hill and Old Pine Hill, and you got that big pile of dirt, and everybody, all the neighbors and all the butters are wondering when we're going to find out what's going on there, you know, because we know you, they're not done. And do you like looking at just high grass and a mess and a pile of dirt? Is there no, you know, can they do that here too? Just, just leave that area just untended and, you know, just left? Is that considered green space between all this? I don't know, I'm trying to find those questions out. And, you know, what the rules are on it, and you guys know, we don't. And off the top of my head, you want any more?
Hi, my name's Lynn Kysker, 160 Pine Hill Road. And we butt 156 all the way down from the very front, all the way back down to the cemetery. My husband's already hit on probably most of the things that I had here. I guess other just little things to touch on, I mean, it's rock wall almost the whole way down. There's a small section that does not have rock walls, down by the back lots. I'm going to make sure you're not going to touch the rock wall, it doesn't get touched. I mean, there's a 30-foot, we're proposing a 30-foot utility easement all the way down on our side, almost all the way. We're concerned about that, that's one concern. We want to make sure, I mean, how, the setbacks, R1, R2, I mean, how, we want to make sure, like my husband said, that all this is permissible on this size of the lot. I don't understand how you're going to get, how could that can be allowed on that size? If they can kind of go over, I would like to have information on that. Again, the effect on the schools and municipalities. There's, sorry, I'm just trying to look at my notes here. I'd like to get copies of the applications and any, anything that they submitted, and what can we get? Is there any kind of timeline? I mean, we were told out there today that there's nothing really we can do about it. You know, they, that as long as everything that they've applied for is by code, that there's nothing we can do. And that's, that's very sad, you know? We've had this property for a long time. I'd like to get a copy of the, you know, the condo bylaws, they can allow pets. you know, the condo bylaws. They can allow pets. Again, the driveway, like my husband said, there's a, the traffic is terrible. We've had our rock wall hit numerous times, our, our mailbox wiped out. People have had accidents there. There's so many ins and outs there between, like you said, Old Pine Hill Cemetery, the, the two entrances to the Mobile Home Park. There's gonna be that one, is, I mean, it's terrible right there. People don't go thirty-five, that's for sure. You know, the size of the bedrooms. There's back patios, it looks like, that are on the backside that face on that one unit that's against our, our property. It looks like they have like patios and you're gonna put bushes there. Just concerned about, you know, I guess the visibility and, and pets and what they're gonna allow. Then Lot Three, the hill. There's nothing, I think, that he said that they're doing right now with it. But there must be some kind of intent. Why are they leaving it right now? Is there some, you know, is there supposed to be an open space for, for, for that one, for the lot? I'm sorry, bouncing around here. But where are you putting in the, the units in Lot Two? Again, in the concern for, the space for it. Isn't there supposed to be a certain amount of open or common space? I mean, that's all been taken into account, I'm sure. I know you guys are very good at those. But, um, it's, I just want to have a little bit more information. Like I said, my husband came down trying to get it. We didn't get the proper information. And just trying to, you know, we've been there for like about twenty years. Just trying to make sure that, you know, where we live, we love it there. And, um, I don't think I have anything else to say, sorry. We have, you know, walks that go out around the back. It's a very nice property. Is, the, the lots in the back now that we just heard about when we were there today for the preview and walkthrough, those lots in the back, it looks like there'll be the code, I mean, with the easement coming back, but, and, but there's nothing there for, there's nothing that we can do on that either. I mean, they're just gonna be lots. They don't have to put any fence. They don't have to do anything there, right? I mean, it's just a, a building lot. It's according to the town ordinances, just to go by their rules, right? So, I mean, it's just, we're gonna have more questions, but it just seems like a very odd way of doing things that you don't, you know, you just kind of have to keep coming back and forth and back and forth, you know? I guess that's all I can think of right now, but I would like to get copies of, you know, the applications and plans and everything that we can get so that we can review it and come back and ask more questions.
Okay, thank you, James.
Uh, sorry. Mike?
Yep. Dave?
Copy the application which we got, which is what the planning board has, on the town's website. Underneath today, if you click on it, it's underneath there, all the information that the planning board, that the town, the town employee has, coenforcement, town planning has, it's all on the website, everything. We don't have any secret documents. It's all published on the town website.
Under the government section, that's where you'll find.
Under? Yep, government, planning board.
You won't find it if you go to the planning department. You'll have to go to the government section under that.
Gentlemen, my name is John Ull. I own one fifty-nine Pine Hill Road.
Can you state your last name again, please?
I gotta type the record.
Sure. U Z Z L E.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Show of hands, who travels on Pine Hill Road heading to or from, say, Lebanon? Many people do. Has anyone ever thought about doing any kind, is, is there any kind of, survey team that's going to be looking at the roads and the traffic pattern, especially on that particular corner? In my tenure of living where I do, for the past ten years, I've, I have witnessed two really awesome accidents right there on that corner. And the reason why, speed is a huge factor on that corner. Speed limit's thirty-five. Nobody does thirty-five on that corner. I've actually had the police sit in front of my front yard, right into my driveway, and clock people flying up and down that road. And for a little while, they sat there and they, they had a nice little speed trap there, probably six, seven years ago. It was great. The problem is, on this particular corner, you have the entrance to, if I can use your map. You have the entrance to the Mobile Home Park, and now you're going to put an entrance to condos in an excellent blind spot. So if you travel up that road, right on that spot, you will not see traffic coming in or out of either of these, these entrances until, if you're traveling at thirty-five, you may, you'll, you'll be fine. If you travel forty, forty-five, which is kind of the norm, you're not gonna, it's, the braking issue, I mean, it's, my house shakes when people do over fifty. People do sixty on that corner, I feel it, and it happens a lot. So this particular corner is kind of dangerous. Somebody should be looking into that, some sort of traffic pattern or, or some sort of, I don't know. The second issue that I have is, yes, you guys are putting in a utility, some sort of utility to get water and sewer and electric and so forth down to the other lots. At some point, is that gonna be paved? Just a big question. Because looking at the other map on this, it really looks like that's going to be a road at some point down the line. And I know, hey, my house is right in front of that, and, you know, I know that my neighbor Chris is going to be having the issues with headlights in his living room and probably in his bedroom and so forth, and I'm gonna have that issue if those, if that easement turns into a paved road also. So, is that fair? Nah. You know, I'm just a homeowner. I'm just a guy who owns a house right, right there. Is it fair to the other people? Nah. So, I would just like to have more information about what's going on and, and not be blindsided by, ooh, they're, they're, they're doing this great. So, traffic pattern is a big thing. It's a, it is an unsafe corner. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I'm, uh, Chris White. I live at one fifty-one Pine Hill Road. I live directly across from where the driveway is proposed. I'm gonna get headlights, probably all hours of the night, shining my living room and bedroom, like John said. Bought my property eleven years ago. I was only twenty-three years old. You know, I got a pretty good deal on it. I love that. I could look across the road, see a big field, deer come out, and it's relatively quiet more than, other than the traffic, and there's a lot of traffic, people going to work. The traffic is a big problem for me. Trying to get out of my driveway is extremely hard. I get almost rear-ended probably three, four times a week because people are going so fast around that corner. And I have to like hustle to get out of my driveway and get going, and I hate that. People do not do anywhere near the speed limit. And now with this proposed driveway across the way, add in the, the trailer park, add in the fact that people don't go, the speed limit, it's gonna be very dangerous. I've witnessed the same accidents that John has, and they've been pretty bad because people just don't slow down. I've had somebody end up in my front yard because they didn't know how to slow down, you know? My mailbox is across, is directly across the street. It's actually gonna, it's where the proposed driveway is, and I've seen that thing get hit probably close to a dozen times. And I just leave it there because it's kind of entertaining to see how many times it get hit in the winter or whatever, but, and I know I'm jumping all over the place here, but I like my house. I like where I can look across there and see nothing. Now I'm gonna be looking at all these condos, and I'm sure it's gonna create a lot of noise. It's gonna create a lot of traffic. I think where the proposed driveway is, is a terrible idea. And why can't it go out onto Cemetery Road? That's my question. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I have my phone because I wrote everything down. Um, my name's Stephanie Jones. I live at one sixty-one Pine Hill Road. I just have to say, I moved down here, back to where I grew up about, since two thousand seventeen from North Conway. And I specifically picked my house because of where it was and because of how quiet it was, and it was better for my kids. Just wanna put that out there. Since living there, I also have to hustle my butt out of my driveway because there's no cars coming and all of a sudden they're whipping around the corner. It is crazy and they fly through there. So my main concern is the traffic. I have young children. Actually, I have eight children. I have two who still live with me, but I have six grandchildren. It is crazy, and I'm so afraid for my kids to go into my front yard because of how fast this traffic goes through, just, just flying down the road. And you're right, the sirens hit like right before you get to our houses, and I never thought about that because they're coming around the corner. It is all the time. It, it, it's all the time, and it just, it's, it's frightening. And when you have a small kids, the traffic is a huge deal. So with that being said, um, I know that John touched on all the entrances from Old Pine Hill Road to Foxridge, and now you're adding one or two more. The traffic is just going to get worse. And I didn't even, when we first got the letter in the mail, I wasn't really thinking about the traffic. I was thinking about extra houses and what was going in there. Is this subsidized housing? Is my, and I suppose I can't be answered. If it is or isn't, is my, is my, you know, the market value on my home gonna go down? Is it time for me to sell my house after I drove down here probably for two months looking for a house and finally picked that one? I mean, I hope not, um, because when traffic gets bad, as I'm talking to my husband, who can't be here tonight because he works away, he's like, he's telling me, as I'm sitting there, it's time to move. We need to sell the house before that goes in because our market value is gonna go down. That's just sad. I, I bought my home in Berwick. These houses aren't even built yet, and I'm being, I'm gonna have to move it regardless. These are being built. The traffic's gonna get worse. I'm gonna have more grandchildren because I have eight children. I mean, they're just gonna keep on coming. I mean, it's just, it's, it's not, and you have, you have a small child too. It's, it's just not, it's not safe. It's not a safe area anymore. With that being said, how are you going to accommodate all these extra families who have children going on buses? I had to transport my children during COVID because the buses, well, being safe or not, whatever with COVID, but it continues on. I still have to pick up my kids sometimes to, and bring them to, I bring my daughter every day to school. It's just, you, what are you supposed to do? How are more kids getting on these buses? There's already a bus shortage, especially for our area. I mean, they've canceled school for a couple, what, Lebanon, Berwick once, because there was no bus drivers to get these kids there. So now we're adding more, and I'm all for building and families coming in. That's great, but not right there and not that traffic flow. It's the traffic flow. I guess when, does this project start? When does building start? So we have to worry about all these construction vehicles and people going in and out? So we have at least a timeframe to plan something in our own households, and when does this project plan on finishing? As a homeowner, I'd like to know, to give myself time if I want to sell my house or not, before it gets bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Kysker, one sixty Pine Hill Road again. I just want to make a civil consultant, you guys, aware of the fact that that property does have quite a bit of bamboo on it. And it's right where they split the original lot and that little house. You may not be able to see it in the winter. You gotta look good, but it's chock full of it. And there is none on my property, and I don't believe there's any on yours or anybody else that'll butts it. And if they're gonna start construction and start spinning dirt around there, they better pay attention to what they're doing because bamboo is not easy to get rid of, and I'm not paying to get rid of it. Somebody else is. And I've been here with you guys and made you aware of it, so please consider that. We all know you can get filled real cheap if you don't mind it having bamboo in it, but everybody else pays for real, right? For real dirt, and there's a big difference, but that bamboo is quite a bit. I made the original person, when they bought the property and they went in there to redo that house, I walked over and I made sure, and I pointed it out to all of them. And the gentleman, the older gentleman that's been there has kept the grass cut around it, which is probably his only way to keep it, try to keep it down. But when you start pushing dirt around and excavating, that's when it becomes a big issue, and that ought, that needs to be a big concern, that bamboo.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I keep coming in my head, can't get it answered. The other thing, Craig Kysker, one sixty Pine Hill Road. The other thing is, you know, I don't want to do it to anybody, any of these people, but they're also got the driveway. Miss Falls driveway has big stone wall, which you barely can see out of that. I pulled out of that many times when I was helping her out over the years, had the pleasure of being with her. What a wonderful woman. Never left her without being a better person. Great lady. A true Berwickian. Not me, her. No, finest kind. But that also, I mean, don't forget, there's a lot right there that only has a post office box, you know? That's right there. That would have no headlights coming out, okay? You could be directly across an intersection if you guys, you know, on the one below us too, but nobody's doing any planning that way. We're just popping them in wherever they come out and acting like it's a driveway. It's not a driveway. And if these guys are gonna keep adding more to it, it's more than just ten houses with God knows how many bedrooms. We're still waiting for that answer with the drum roll. But, uh, you know, you don't know how many cars are coming out of there. They, they already have two parking spots and everybody's got an extra one for a friend or, it's, it's a nice forethought though for maintenance and all. I think, you know, I, I understand that part of it. I think it's, you know, it's all good thinking. But that's, that's all volume coming out of there. You know, that house is gonna become more of these because you guys didn't say, no, this is it. If you're gonna do it, this is where, what we got, you know? When are we gonna get the full story on anything, okay? The fact they can wait and revisit it and come back and build again. Isn't there rules like this is the amount you can build on that and that's it? It's over. You know what I mean? That, that's what you bought, and that's what you got. And, uh, but when they can keep coming and chipping away at a piece of property as things turn or the COVID. I mean, when I came here in two thousand, people spent New Year's Eve out here with a beer in their hand, waiting in line and hoping somebody would have to pee so they could move up because you only gave away twenty building permits, you know? And now we give them away like their toilet paper, you know? Here, take another roll. So it's just getting ridiculous, and yes, it feeds into our schools, our buses. All these things are all real. That's why I thought when, it was interesting when I read the town bylaws for Cluster that they said we want a written effect of what it is on the fire, the police, the town, the road maintenance, everybody. And if this doesn't apply under a condo, because I haven't got, it should, all right? And we need to change that, so please tell me the difference, and I will go home and read the government site. Thank you very much, Irish. And, and try to read it and get it out of it, but if this is something, if this is something we can't deal with here, we, you know, maybe I need to come more and more people need to come more, and we need to revisit this because, uh, we are starting to really fill them up, and we already pay an incredible mill rate right now. And we all know with inflation, the prices of houses may come down, and what's that gonna do? It's just gonna up the mill rate, right? We're still gonna have the same amount of bills, right? We all know that game. And so, you know, sooner or later. And so, you know, sooner or later, we need to be responsible as a town to say what we really can fund and what we really can take, and who, how, who we can help, how many we can help. So we can because we all create low income, we all create people that need a hand and help. Every city, every town has those people in it, and they're all an important part of it in every way. But we all need to know what we need to plan for, for our budget, to take care of all the needs that the town needs, including the needy and the elderly and the different people that might not be able to pay their taxes as they get older and shouldn't have to leave their house. But this all feeds into the same thing, is our concern about, you know, how many bedrooms? Can they build more? What is the limit? And why, you know, if you just dig a little underground power, you can turn it into R1? God, you light that on fire and see how many people start running with that, we'll fill those schools real quick, you know? So please give it some consideration. I'm not saying I wanna spend New Year's Eve out here, but we did used to have a lot of fun.
Okay, thank you.
John, John has a 159 Pine Hill Road. Quick question on this existing house that's gonna be on this parcel here. Is there an ability or a way that we can get this so that this is an historic house? It's a farmhouse. I know because I live across the street from it, and the people who initially built this built my house. Is there any historic society that can make this home or this parcel here to remain a house after this particular gentleman who's, who's in it right now when he passes away so that this stays an historic house, so that no other buildings can be put there or this can be torn down? Is there anything along those lines that can be done or researched?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Seems like we have a lot of questions.
You're gonna leave the public hearing open, but you're gonna move on, correct?
Yeah, yeah. With all these questions, we'll leave the public hearing open. We'll give, whatever we can get answered tonight, and then the stuff that doesn't get answered, we will answer it in the next meeting. So with that being said, we'll be moving on to the approval of minutes for December 1st, 2022.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah, speak up a little louder, Doug.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from December 1st.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? We're gonna do a roll call vote because Matt's at Zoom. We'll start with you, Matt. Yeah? Great, say that again. Hit the space button.
I was muted, aye.
All right. Jerry?
Aye.
I M E S, don't?
Yes.
And CJ's abstaining because he wasn't here last meeting. Okay. All right, so old business preliminary subdivision, lot 36, Matt 36, lot 38, the Berwick's Pine Hill Road and Cemetery Road Civil Consultants. Lee J, would you mind chiming in on this first for us?
Uh, I can a little bit, and I think that, um, certainly most of the information or questions are things that Neil is gonna need to respond to, but one of the things that the board should consider, considering the concerns that have been raised, would be requiring the applicant to do a traffic impact analysis for that area, which would include site systems visibilities, um, so that we have a better understanding of the traffic issues out there. Um, I think that my memo that was done before, um, the original sketch was discussed, excuse me, included the discussion about, I just wanna go back to the plan, um, discussion about buffering along Mack Way and protecting the Gani property and up on that side, so Neil may wanna take a look at additional buffering along that area as requested. Relevant to the zoning, the zoning that's there is there. Nothing has been done that would, that would allow the zoning to change based on this development. Um, so the front part is R1, and the, there's a split in there where it goes to R2 on plan, excuse me, but the, certainly better understand it in the R1 zone. Um, the minimum lot size, the minimum lot size or density allowance is one unit for every 10,000 square feet, and in the R2, it's one unit for every 20,000 square feet. This project is not, um, a cluster development, a cluster subdivision, which is what your ordinance is talking about, is for a traditional residential subdivision where single-family homes are put on lots, where they need to provide a traditional design layout based on the zoning, and then a cluster plan which would allow for smaller lots to cluster them in certain locations of a property without adding additional units in what the zoning would allow. On this project, what the zoning allows is all the units that they could get. I have not done a calculation myself to determine how many units they could get, and I think maybe that's a question for Neil to be able to answer, um, so that, um, there's a better understanding of that. On the easement issue, um, it's easy for me to say an easement is just that, it's an easement. Basically, what the easement is, is the allowance for the sewer and water lines to run underground there along someone, on, on someone else's property. So, um, I can't answer the issue about a road at some point. Um, that's another thing that I think Neil's gonna need to answer, or the board could certainly, um, consider a condition of approval when it's time for that, that, that utility easement never be paved, um, which is, is fair to do. But an easement is simply allowing, for example, the, the Berwick Water and Sewer Districts to run their sewer lines underground along that property in order to access, for example, the two lots that are all back on Cemetery Road. I'm trying to think. The historic district issue certainly is an interesting discussion. Um, love to see documentation that shows that it's actually a historic property to the community. Um, I can tell you that in, in any town in the state of Maine, including the Maine Historic Preservation, unless it's a very high priority historic district, all the state historic district preservation commission will do is require the applicant to take photos and then allow them to tear the building down. So, um, it would take a great deal for somehow preserving that as a property owner and requiring them to keep it unless the historic district wants it for some reason or some other entity wants to maintain it. Um, but that's certainly a question for Neil to have discussion on as well, since he represents the landlord there. Anything I missed that I think I can help with? Um, I'm not sure. I think a lot of this is got to be turned over to Neil at this point for, for him to provide some responses.
Okay, thank you, Lee J.
Thank you, yeah. So Neil reposes civil consultants. I don't know if you just want me to, to go down through?
Yeah, if you wanna just go down the list as you saw it.
Okay, so, um, one of the items was, um, how much of the land is being used or could be developed in the future? Uh, that's, that's a big item on this one that's, the density that we have here for this development as shown, this, uh, renders the entire, the entirety of this lot not to be developed anymore. This is, this is the most you could get out of it. If we did, you know, the conventional subdivision, you probably could run through the whole, you can run through the whole lot, the, the entire lot and get the same amount of lots, you know, around a roadway out there, but there's a lot more infrastructure and there's a lot more impact on a development like that. Uh, so this was really trying to keep it up into the, into the portion of the, of the lot that was, you know, field and lawn and, you know, previously developed. So there's no, there's no way that any of this, as shown, could be, uh, could be modified to get more lots or more units in here. This is, this is it, unless there was a massive change in, you know, the code with the town, which I don't see anybody making a, you know, a change in that. As far as the existing house, existing house is to remain, and that lot that was created there was done so, done so specifically with that in mind to keep that building as is, as it exists right now. Uh, it's, the lot itself is oversized for what it, it needs to be in that zone, uh, and that's so we can keep all those setbacks and everything in a location where that building can remain and be, and still be code compliant. So that's, uh, there's no, there's no chance in the future that this is going to be expanded. If, if we expanded this, or if we even put more pavement out for the, over the utility easement, it would, uh, trigger a lot of things that we'd have to do for DEP permitting and things like that that just wouldn't make sense to do on this site because the developable area is so, you know, is so tight with this, with the density that we've shown here. Uh, so that's, that's, I think that's the biggest, the biggest item is, this is kind of the end of development on this site as far as just what's allowed to be out there. The, the utility easement, I think, I think Lee J explained that, how it's not, it's not really changing, it doesn't change the, the zoning for, you know, each individual lot. It's just that if you provide municipal town, town, municipal sewer and water, you don't need to account for a well and a, a leach field on your lot, so they allow that, that lot to be smaller all the way up to those Cemetery Hill lots, so we could shrink those down and get two usable lots out there. We have to provide that municipal services. In the easement itself, interacting with any of, any existing piping or anything out there, that will, if there's anything out there that we'd have to go over or under, both of those lines are gonna be pressure lines. That's gonna have to be, uh, individual pumps on any sewer system, any, you know, sewer collection system that's out there, so that would be pumped, and we could avoid whatever kind of drainage facilities are out there with that. Again, no tear down of the house is proposed. Um, I'm not sure what Richard's plans are with the house, but it's, as of right now, there's been no talk of, of tearing it down, and it's only been what we need to do to save it, so. Yep, but the question of green space came up. It's really just the remaining land that's gonna be, the remaining land of the condo association, uh, and that's all gonna be, you know, it's not gonna be developable. Uh, we didn't have any specific easements or anything put on that back land, just other than the fact that it's, uh, it's part of that density requirement, so it's, it's, you know, it's forbidden to be developed after this.
How many bedrooms are gonna be in each one, do you know?
Currently, he's showing two. We don't have, he hasn't given me a final floor plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so for the site, we just, we did the, uh, the parking for, for the two bedrooms. The, the parking as it's shown, I'm not sure, I haven't actually even done the calc's going beyond two bedrooms, uh, but as far as I know, we don't have, you know, we don't have floor plans yet, and I, I wouldn't wanna venture a guess, so I, I bring that.
Okay, so as of right now, it's two?
Correct, yeah. As far as the traffic, I know, um, there, there is a lot of traffic on Pine Hill, and I know this, this, I've done quite a few, you know, traffic studies and things like that. A development like this ends up, when you do the, the full traffic study, uh, the, the residential, you know, uh, generators really are not, never usually the issue on those roads. It's always, it's always the traffic that's, that's existing on the road that, that is the issue. So I do have an initial traffic assessment in, in the application where we kinda describe what our, our site and our generation's doing. Uh, if the town were to engage and someone to analyze Pine Hill Road as a whole, uh, you know, we could work that into our, you know, into what we found, we could provide you with that information, uh, but I, that's, I think that probably we have to talk to Jody and, and see if Public Works, you know, has more information that they could provide on that one. More of enforcement issue, and it's not, not on, not really for us to be addressing with our application, but again, I think it's something that within the town and, and Public Works could be discussed.
Neil?
Yep.
Neil, how, how about site distance? Can you do a site systems analysis and put it along the plan?
Yep, we, we do have a site distance on here on our sheet.
I guess I didn't see that.
Oh, I think it's on, it's on sheet R1. Sorry, it's on the, it's on the roadway profile sheet. On the road and getting down at the, at the line of the site with vehicles and the, and the exiting vehicle, and just marking where you still have that vision. Um, and for, for this one, the, there was less vision going up the hill. There was still 590 feet of vision at that point, and then going down the hill, this is, now, when you're looking down that way, that's where it really straightens out, so there's quite a bit of, of, of vision down that, down that way, especially just from where that's, where our entrance is located, it's kind of beyond, beyond where that, where that turn ends, so that was about 900 feet of distance there. And that's, you know, it's all relative to, to what speed, you know, vehicles are coming in and out at, so it's, it meets, everything we have on here meets the requirements for, for the roadways and the, and the driveways. Uh, it's just something that, you know, if we could get, you know, blessing from, from Jody or, or something, or somebody at Public Works to, to take a look at it and go through it, it'd be good. Of the roadway, uh, as opposed to getting that right in the middle of the roadway if they had to do any work in it, uh, but that's, that's something we could revisit and, and see if it, see if it makes sense to, to push that over, and that would also, it would realign the road a bit, uh, just trying to make sure we come in at a 90 degree on the, on the entrance.
Right.
But I can, I can take a look at that.
Okay.
And see if that, see if we can do something with that.
Okay.
And again, there was just, uh, the question of why couldn't we come in over Cemetery? It's that same, uh, that same line of, of reasoning that we don't wanna do all that damage to.
Sold from the start? Sold from the start or rented?
No, no.
We're not, we're not going back and forth right now.
Yeah, but these.
It's okay. I know, and you can be curious, that's fine. This is just his time to answer those questions. I know you're gonna have more questions, and the public hearing is still, it's, we're gonna have it again, so, thank you.
And, um, as far as the impact statement, we, we did have input from, from Water Sewer. Uh, they've gone out to the site with us and, and given us, given us information that we needed, and we've updated the plans with. And as far as the, uh, the school impact, I've actually had, I've had many conversations with Audra, I'm the superintendent at SAD 60. I think, I think that hit everyone, unless you guys had one?
Yeah. The rock wall on the back side, she just wanted to make sure that that's not gonna get touched.
And that, no, that, you could, we'd be fine with that being a condition of approval as well.
And it also seemed like possible more screening behind that?
Yep, and that's, and that's another thing we'd, more than happy to install, you know, as much, as much screening or as little screening as, as the board and, is the board's pleasure and, and is requested by, by the butters. It's, it's certainly, it's something that, you know, we did this with the intent of kind of trying to, trying to keep the, the development downhill here. In fact, we're trying to, uh, trying our best to, to stop flow that was going there and catch it and, you know, outlet it to a more appropriate location, so.
Hey, Jerry?
There was a question about the rock wall, as it's shown down on the other two lots, doesn't extend all the way down there. What's, is there a plan to do that, for that gap, or?
Um, as, as far as the easement? Um, as far as the easement? Oops, sorry.
Down towards?
Down through here?
Yeah.
Yes, this, we just, we stopped the easement here, just due to the fact that once you get past this line.
No, but the rock wall that's shown here, I think the question was, it stops, right? And doesn't go all the way?
Oh, uh, no, I'm not sure why that is cut off there. No, there's, there's not going to be any impact to that.
I'll tell you what. Sorry, I'm not allowed.
Sorry.
We got your question.
I'll answer your own question.
So, but no, we're, we're not, we're not planning to impact, well, we're not going to impact any of that, that property line there. We're staying away from that and keeping, keeping the distance from the property line that's required for both the utility lines and any kind of development. Of course, out back in this section, we don't plan on doing any work at all from here, all the way through here until we get, we get to the end here. Once we stub those, those off, that's going to be on whoever buys these lots to perform that work out there.
So, there's no plan to extend that wall and have it meet up with the other part here, right?
There's no plan to do anything with that wall at all, no.
Okay. I got one more. Okay, yeah. Just going down the list, a couple of things that were missed. There was a question on frontage and setbacks that wasn't answered yet.
And I guess that, all I can say to that one is they...
The plan says a minimum of 150.
Correct.
Right here.
Right, and that's, and that's, on this, back here. So, what we ended up doing with that is, that's why we had to create this, this private right of way. So, we're getting our frontage off a private right of way, built to the town standards now, as opposed to getting 150 feet on Cemetery, on Pine Hill Road. This existing lot has still been left with, this one's left with more frontage than it needs, but that's just because of the width of the lot, we needed to make sure we kept everything in the setbacks.
So, the frontage and setbacks is met by what you did here?
Correct, yep, yep. Our setbacks are, look at setbacks, our setbacks are off of, off of our, our right of way here, so we meet all those.
Okay. There was a question about an existing culvert and the issues with that?
I think that's the one that was, was discussing back at the... He was discussing back at this portion of it, where this, this wetland here, you know, abuts the, the neighboring property and the culvert that comes through here, we can, you can identify water running through this portion of the lot, but we didn't pick up an invert, so it didn't pick up a bottom of a pipe anywhere out there. But, anything that's out here, we'd be able to avoid because the utility lines that are going through are going to be either a pressure sewer line, inch and quarter pressure sewer line, that will be feeding into the, into the line on Pine Hill, or it's going to be the water line, which is, we should be able to dip that down to get it, to get it to avoid anything out there.
They won't throw up the culvert or anything?
Nope.
I guess that was the question, right?
Nope, the intent is to leave everything...
Drain made, drain sealed.
Yep, it's, and it's, the intent is to leave everything, everything flowing through the site as it did before and not, not impact anything that's going, you know, up and down through the page here.
Okay. There was a question, is how the land's going to be left? Some of it, right? There, how's the dirt, or what?
I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not quite sure. It's, this is just going to be, this could be, you know, an active construction site while it's being built. Any spoils piles, we'll have to, you know, abide by, you know, the erosion control plan that's, that's approved and, and was submitted with, in the plans here. And it's, it's, we're not going to have any spoil piles that are going to be remaining after the completion of construction. We're not going to be impacting these wetlands, so everything from here on won't be touched. So, this portion here is really going to be, you know, all contained on this portion of the developed site and it, it would be almost impossible to try and get a, try and have a spoils pile anywhere on there when you're done and not have it be, you know, an eyesort of these and probably wouldn't be able to sell them, so. It's, it's going to be, it's going to do as much, you know, landscaping and beautification of the, of the, you know, the surrounding area as possible, so.
Okay. The other question, I don't think you can answer because the condo bylaws aren't done, but there was a question about pets.
Correct, yeah, and that's, I'm, we're not sure on that one.
Yep, and then, I think the last two here, starting timeline and when to finish?
And that's, that's going to be kind of based on, on, on demand and, and the approval process as well. I'm sure it'll, you would probably like to start after, after the thaw, you know, in April, if all the, if all the, you know, approvals were obtained. And as far as the, the timeline to fully complete it, I am not sure on that. I'd have to come back and I'll put something together for the next meeting and I'll talk with the applicant and see what kind of resources he's planning on putting into it, you know, and what time.
That's all I have. I think they addressed everything.
Irish, do you have something?
Yeah, I, sorry, feel awkward interjecting, but I did write down one other that hasn't been covered. Craig and Lynn asked if there were any requirements for the two lots out back. Those are just going to be two basic house lots, just the basic code, or is there anything in regards to this project that's...
Nope, no, those are just, those were just two, this is basically the size that, that we wanted this and the applicant said, well, if we run lines out to the end, would we be able to, you know, get lots out there for, for people to utilize? I said, we could, but I think he said we'd have to get the municipal sewer water out there. That's the only way you could, you could get those. And so, he said he thought it would be, he thought it would be, you know, a worthy investment for, for that, to try and get those lots, but they are, you'd just be selling the land and then they'd have someone, you know, a builder probably not affiliated with, with our applicant in any way, would develop those lots. We had talked briefly with, with Star at the water department about trying to continue, trying to continue the water main and loop it back around, but it was, it was a little too onerous to try and, try and take on at this point. So, it would just be, it would just be stopped there and it would be a private line, I guess going to that too. The utility, this, this would be an extension of, of the, of the larger water main coming up to here and from here on in, this would just be services. And so, the easement is really just to allow these two lots to, to pull water from, from that extended main out here, so.
Thank you.
Lee J, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I don't. I just make sure, Neil, that you can provide me whatever you have electronically whenever it's done and, and any changes are made so that I can keep track of everything going on with the project for the next, next round.
Okay, sounds good. Is, is that Dropbox working for you or is that, you'd rather me email it?
Uh, just email it, that would be great. Thank you.
Neil, can you send it to me as well?
Hold it, Neil.
Okay. And then actions tonight, is there any actions being taken tonight?
Um, the, if, it might take me a few minutes if you have other business, but the board could, could approve the preliminary application, but I think there's a list of conditions and even though Neil, although Neil did put it on the record, a lot of this information, so, you know, the board could approve the preliminary application and if there's anything missing or has not been addressed for final, I would certainly work to make sure that those conditions are addressed at that time. So, you could take action tonight if you wanted to. It would be closing the public hearing and taking action, or you could keep the public hearing open or have a second public hearing during final review. However you want to work it, you're going to be able to work it at this point because we're not approving a final project.
Okay. Mike?
Yep. My recommendation would be to find the application complete, have Neil come back at the next meeting.
You mean approve the preliminary?
Yes.
Okay. And then come back. So, then I would have to, I would have to close the public hearing and then have another one?
You wouldn't have to.
Well, that's what Lee J just said.
Yep.
You can either leave the public hearing open or you could close it and just suggest that you're going to have another public hearing during the final review.
Okay.
There's, there's nothing that says you can't do that.
Okay, so, I mean, I think we should leave it open and then that way, right before we go to the final, if there's any more concerns or questions, we can answer them then. What do you guys think?
I'd say that's probably a good idea.
Okay. And Matt, do you have any questions or comments? No?
Not really, no.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary and...
With, with keeping the final, or keeping the...
With the conditions that we accepted with the shortened impact assessment, the...
Traffic study, right?
The easement, the no road on easement and the traffic.
Was it the impact study?
That, as far as that one goes...
Not the impact study, but the one you said with Jody about the whole Pine Hill?
Yeah, if we talked about that...
Site distance?
Site distance.
Site distance.
Site distance, yeah, we do have that one on, on sheet R1, but I'll put that on, on the site plan, so that's on, on the plans of record there.
Okay.
And Neil, have you done trip gen yet?
Yep, yep, we have an initial traffic assessment with the, with the trip gen numbers in.
You can work?
Yep.
Okay.
Could you just make that motion again?
Okay.
Just stated, yeah.
Okay. I will make that motion again to accept the preliminary with the conditions stated.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call, Matt?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Hi, myself, I'm a yes. Don and CJ?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you, Neil.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
See, one of the 19th?
Yes.
I thought you said a second ago you're keeping the public hearing open.
It is open.
Public hearing is open.
So, I thought that meant that I could ask one question, like clarification.
It is not open right now to speak. That'll be next meeting.
I thought you said we could ask questions here after, so that they can answer the next meeting.
The next meeting, you can. Once it's in old business, we, it's ended at that point and we've moved on.
Well, we tried to raise our hand and ask before you even voted.
Well, we were already in old business. Once we get into old business, you, you can't ask any more questions until we...
So, what's the point of leaving public hearing open?
So, the next meeting, we, you can speak your conditions then.
Is that correct, Lee J?
Yes. So, basically, you're leaving it open, so you're not advertising a public hearing again. It's in the hands of the, the abutters to be aware that the 19th is the next meeting and that you will allow comment from them during that part of the process. And I'm assuming that Neil's revised plans and submission, the folks from the abutters should check daily to see if that information's been submitted and yes, it's on the website. Certainly, paper copies could be available to look at in the, in town hall as well, I would assume, right, David?
Yes, correct.
So, just keep checking and find out, you know, when Neil gets his revised information in for the next meeting.
Right, we'll get that in, like, Thursday will be the, will be the deadline for that, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we need the information at least a week before we post it. All right, moving on. Findings of fact, major subdivision 57, Old Route 4, Altus Engineering, tax map R62, Lot 7. I didn't see any issues with the findings of fact, so I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of fact for old 57 Old Route 4.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call vote, Matt?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
I'm a yes. Don and CJ?
Hi.
All right. Findings of facts are accepted. And then, next old business is revision of land use ordinance and subdivision regulations. All right. Dave, you want to go through this?
Okay, so you guys remember Kristy? She came out here about six months ago and she is going to be helping us with the MS4 revision, which every town in, in municipality, actually, in Burwick needs to change. She's done a great job. She wrote a pretty much, okay, she wrote pretty much the whole, she took our, our copy of our, of our laws and she rewrote them to be exactly what we need to have in our bylaws. So, you have, she, she wasn't able to make this meeting. She's going to be able, she's working in another municipality tonight, but she's going to be at the 19th meeting if you have any other questions. I know we don't have a full board tonight as well. So, what we need to do is get this approved by, we have three meetings because we need to get this to the selectmen by March, the first meeting of March. The selectmen will have a public hearing on it, which will have another, will have a public hearing on this, by the way, on the 19th. But, the selectmen will have a public hearing on it and then they'll approve it, and if they approve it, and then it'll go to a townwide vote. So, every, every voter will be voting on this and this will go into effect July 1st of 2023. So, what you see is the stuff that's crossed out is the stuff that's coming out of the regulations and the stuff that is added is highlighted in sharper fonts. So, that is what you have there.
Basically, the notes from the discussion we had with her two meetings ago.
That's, that's exactly it. So, there's no need to act on this tonight. I know it's 19 pages or 17 pages, because I printed them out, but you could take a look at them or, you know, you could wait till the 19th and ask for any questions that you might come up with over the next two weeks. You don't need to act on this tonight, but you should think about the 19th or the first meeting in February acting upon this. So, we would just look for approval of this change, then we go to the selectmen and then we go to the voters in June. If you have any questions, you can ask me, you can ask Lee J.
I lost Lee J.
We lost Lee J.
Yeah, I think we lost him a little while ago. It's, it's okay.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, we're, he's, he's already past his point. Okay, so, we'll just talk about that next meeting. The next is appointment of positions, January 1st. Well, it's the first meeting in January, so now we have to vote on chair, vice and So, if anyone has any recommendations for chair?
I recommend we keep Michael as, Michael Aru as...
I recommend we keep Michael as, uh, Michael Aru as our chair and, uh, Phil Roy as the vice chair.
One at a time, one at a time.
I'll second Mike Larue as chair.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Roll call. Matt?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And CJ? Yep. All right. Next is the vice.
I say Phil Roy continues to be-
You make a motion? You mean you make a motion?
I mean, I make a motion to have Phil Roy as continuing to be chair.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All right, roll call. Matt?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
I'm a yes. Don and CJ? Both are yeses. All right. And then the secretary.
Is, is that technically my role?
That is your current role, yes. Um, that's basically your basic, what the role of the secretary is, that is the third person in line. If the chair or the vice can't make it to the meeting, you would be the one that would hold the meeting if we still had a quorum. Um, I mean, I'll make a motion that, uh, Matt stays as secretary.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion? All right, roll call. Matt?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
I'm a yes. Don, a yes. And CJ is a yes. All right. All right, no new business. Uh, second public comment. Anything, this is for anything not related to what we've already discussed. Um, it can't be about any-
I didn't say it was!
Okay, I'm just letting you know.
I'm going to ask you a question. What are we doing in this town to try to realize caps? And I heard this gentleman talk to the superintendent of the school district, but what are, what are the considerations that you guys have for the volume of people we're adding? Not just us, Lebanon's on fire right now because you can still afford a house there. And, uh, and North Borough is building quite large too. We have several developments you guys know. Uh, I'm just curious on what you guys-
As far as I know, we don't have any caps. Is, is that correct, Dave?
That's correct. Uh, back when I first moved to this town 22 years ago, we had just done away with, um, the requirement you were mentioning earlier about 15 or 12 permits.
I forget what it was.
12 permits per year, building permits per year. And there was a line literally out the door on New Year's Eve. Um, but that was to manage the growth in the town. At the time, we really didn't have the, the infrastructure. Uh, but now I think a lot's changed. I think something needs to be done, uh, with the amount of, uh, people that we have moving to the town. I agree. Eighty-five hundred people is our population and I see construction crew after constru-, home and developments going in. And I'm like, and now I work for the town and I'm like, ugh, that's, that's a lot. So I think that we need to take a step back, but-
And that would be something that the comprehensive plan would probably be looking into?
That's, that's correct. So that's what we're doing with the comprehensive plan as well.
Right. I can speak to that.
Okay.
Myself and my wife are working on the comp plan, as Dave knows, and that is being addressed. James has done a survey, the town manager. So they're looking into that specific thing.
Great. And that may, that would, once you guys come to a conclusion, that would have to go to a vote, or is that something that our selectmen can take care of themselves?
I don't know what happened.
Something that the selectmen would have to take care of, but it would probably go to a vote. But you, you can know one thing that, you know, James is from this town, I'm from this town, so we have a vested interest in this town. We don't want to make this the next Manhattan. We really don't.
I don't think that's why eighty-five hundred people came here to have Manhattan.
I think you're going to see, I think you're going to see as, as the, as the economy changes and the interest rates have risen for homeownership, you're going to see, you're going to see that the amount of buildings, the amount of, of development is going to slow down. The development was so high for a long time because my mortgage rate's 3%. So, but now, I mean, I think they're averaging like 8%, seven and a half, 8% of. So I think that's, that's, that's a big consideration as well.
And with that consideration, and this is not applied to what we just talked about, but in general, condos, condo fees, people in over their head, barely can pay the bank. Who are you going to pay first? The bank or the condo fee? All right? These bylaws and how we handle them and what they didn't produce tonight, but they produce at your final meeting, I'm sure, then these things really, I, I'm sorry, I know you guys know it. I just had to say it. I'll feel better, okay? You know, but those things, I've watched. I grew up, not here, where condos and townhouses were built in huge developments, pools, everything. Everybody was God's sake. They all look like dirt now because the condo fees were the problem. That's why when Dave told me they weren't being sold, I was like, sweetie, for a while, my wife, I said that too, not Dave. I said, you know, I, I, you know, at least we have that. We can go to one person right now and talk to them.
Yeah.
But we won't have that soon. You'll only have the head of the condo fee if some poor guy wants to get in line, which probably one of you guys, because you are gluttons for punishment. So, I mean, you know.
Well, so I mean, between HOAs and condo associations, they're very similar on how they're handled. And both of them, the town doesn't really have much to do with it until it becomes an issue for code enforcement when, let's say, the, the drains aren't draining and stuff like that aren't happening.
Right, but may, I'm sorry.
Condo Association, Homeowners Association, I don't deal with any of their, like, they've got pets or they, they're not supposed to have. As a, as an example, former jurisdictions that I worked in, former municipality, the homeowners association said no ADUs, no accessory dwelling units. Our zoning ordinance said that particular area, yes, they could. When I enforce, I have to enforce to the code, not to the, their particular documents, whether it be HOA or condo.
That would more likely be a civil issue.
But if they do something that is against code, you guys will always have me to call to step in and do things.
Great.
And then if they do something that's against their condo docs or HOA documents, then it does become a civil matter and there's court processes.
So when people come in to get a final approval and they have their condo bylaws or whatever you call them down, uh, once they submit them to you, that's your last chance to have any say in it, right? To have any input at all, it's your last chance because you don't, you, what you grant that building-
We don't really have any input on it. They basically give us that and it's documented in the paperwork, but we don't tell them they can't have pets. That's something that, I'm just giving you an example.
I'm more worried about the maintenance of the building.
Well, even the maintenance. We don't, we don't say-
You know, that's what I'm worried about is all these people paying in and somebody doesn't pay in and then the next guy finds out and it just becomes a bigger issue.
You got to move the mic over.
I'm sorry.
That's up to the homeowners association, which I, which I live in a homeowners association right downtown here in Burwick and, um, we, the homeowners association, we could, I've looked at the bylaws. They get, they get two times that you can get an email or a letter, or you can get one of the, the guys coming down there saying, hey, you need to pay your homeowners fees. If you don't, two times, they can take a lien out on your house. That's, that's what can happen. And that's, that's what will happen with, that's what could happen with the condo fee if their bylaws are, are structured that way. I grew up living in a condo for a while, um, but that, it wasn't, it wasn't structured that way.
Yep. Okay, thank you. I was just curious on that, you know, just in general.
Yep.
Yeah. It's, the onus is, is left up to the owners to elect a board. They have to have annual meetings. So that's what it is.
I think our only input is that they have something.
Right. Our only input is that they have it. Like they have-
We require them to have something, some type of structure.
Yeah, an agreement of some kind and it has to be written. And that's more or less all you have for-
That's all, yep.
But code is-
I was just curious, because it said that when we were looking into the other things. They said something about bylaws and stuff. I didn't know how far you could go with that. So I was just curious. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, I'll close the second public comment. Uh, informational items?
I don't have any.
Uh, Lee J is already gone.
I know. We didn't talk about this.
Not that, but, um, I kind of wanted to touch base on procedures for, um, joint meetings with other towns. Uh, but we can deal with that after, um, the next meeting. Other than that, I don't-
I, I don't really have anything besides the, um, thanks for coming out to the joint meeting with South Burwick last night. I still haven't talked to Jennifer, who is the code enforcement officer for South Burwick, but she's also the acting town planner right now. I haven't talked to her today, but it looks like the, the 500 feet that is in Burwick with no homes on it, uh, that is paved, that road, we're going to have to do something together with South Burwick. Now, you can, you can either go to their meetings as, as a group, as a, as a, you know, as a board and sit through their meetings and you could vote on it. You could do one vote. Or you can have me go to the meetings and, uh, you know, and I'll, I'll ask Irish to come and, um-
Except for the three key ones.
Except for the three key ones that you guys have to be there.
The three, the three major ones, the, the finding of facts, the final and the other one. The three major ones, you guys would need to be there because you would need a quorum. You would need, should, should be there to be able to make sure that our, our municipality is protected and getting what we need for that, our portion. The rest, you know, James has already double checked and it's fine if you send the peon committee instead of the bigwigs going out.
So I'm, I'm, I'm fine either way.
Okay.
Or if you'd like, you can attend all of the meetings.
Right.
But it will be a joint.
Because I'll be there regardless.
It'll be a joint venture.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's still the, uh, question, he was going to have you check with Lee J in regards to, uh, the site plan amendment for Industry Drive.
Right.
Because something will have to be done there. So you'll be seeing something, but not for that project per se, but because that project impacts-
Indirect through that project.
Yes, because that's impacting the other site plan. So that will be what this board will have to view fully on its own separate.
Jerry?
Will there have to be a public hearing for those people on Industry Drive to know what's going on?
Not for us, not on our side.
Well, yes and no. We are going to provide still. Um, James said that there would be Butters notices sent out to the Industry Drive people, but it would be with their Zoom-
But it's going to go to South Burwick, right?
Yeah. So they'll have their-
We're not holding a meeting for them.
As long as they get-
They'll have their opportunity to speak.
They need the information because of what's happening. That's all I'm concerned about.
Yeah, they'll have the oppor-, well, and my concern when, when, uh, we went up, Dave and I went up and spoke with James first thing, my concern was that the constituents have the opportunity to present any concerns that they have as well.
Right.
Particularly where we're talking a residential industry mix. Um, and James assured us that we'd be able to give the, the Zoom link and the information for any of our constituents here, our residents, to attend the South Burwick meeting as well.
And then the only-
And he will be doing those notifications.
The only other question I had from last night was, there's, we already know, as you say, said Dave, there's a DOT study going on down a little ways.
On Route 4.
On Route 4. Should that be extended because of this and what's going to be happening up that way? That's only like a half a mile from there.
It's being, it's being done from the South Burwick to the North Burwick line. That 2.9 miles of Route 4.
Okay.
They're out there, they're, they're currently out there right now.
Oh, I see them. I live there.
Yeah. We've had, we've had a couple meetings with them up at, uh, what's his name's place, but-
Okay. I'm set.
Mark, Mark Penegast's place is a selectman. And we've had a couple meetings with them, but they're, they're all over it.
Yep. And I, I see them sitting at the end of my road.
They've got, they've gone over a little. Maybe you can put an aisle in here. Maybe you can put a barrier here. Maybe you can put, they got to do something with the 55 mile an hour.
Put a light there. Stop.
Yeah, because it's not 55 miles an hour. Cars aren't doing 55. They're doing 75 miles an hour.
My road's 25 and they're doing 55.
Right. Yeah. My, my life works at the golf course and, yeah.
I was, I was out there tonight, um, after we had our walkthrough over in that property and I'll tell you what, that's, at night it's even worse.
Mm-hmm. Twilight, it's the worst. When the sun comes up and the sun's setting, that's-
It's dangerous.
It is.
The other thing, well, the other thing is those cement trucks leave at 5:00 in the morning because I hear them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just like you were saying last night about the noise for the people, those houses aren't but a thousand feet or less away. They're making noise at 5:00 in the morning.
Sadly, it's going to come down to buyer beware for that portion.
Well, to a point. I mean, we can protect them as much as we can and after that it's-
After that, it will come down. Because you're not going to block all that sound amount of radio.
No, no, you're not.
On my interview coming off the planning board, my interview for this job, James asked me, he's like, what are some of your concerns about this town? I'm like, the 2.9 miles of Route 4 through, in Burwick are a nightmare, the traffic, oh my God. And he's like, okay, I get it, I get it. You're big into this. You're going to be on that committee. So, yeah.
Well, how many deaths have been there in two years?
Right.
I saw one of them.
Right. And, yeah, we have one of the selectmen, his daughter died there.
Yep.
Five or six years ago.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, seeing no further more information, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.